Listen to us and, and let me introduce myself. I'm Larry Allen. I'm the incumbent. I'm currently the chairman of the Fremont County Commissioners. And it's a, it's a big job, you know? Fremont County is 10,000 square miles approximately and bigger than nine states back east, even including Hawaii. So it's a huge county. It's a lot of responsibility. In four years, the last four years, I put 177,000 miles on my vehicle and I used it 98% of the time for just strictly county business. Not only do you have meetings every Tuesday, you also are assigned liaisonships to different boards, different departments, and you have to go to those, those meetings and attend those as well and offer advice and, and input and, and maybe some feelings with the commissioners. Maybe if there's a message they want to send to that department. So it's, it's a busy job. I put in anywhere from 30 to 60 hours a week. You know, if we have an event, a flood, fire, so on and so forth, I'm, I'm pretty much there 24/7. I, I have a ranch out east of Lost Cabin. I don't know if any of you know where that's at, but that's where I live. And we, I'm one member of the, of a board of five. And, you know, there again, it's like any other board, any other committee, your, your one vote. And I try my best to represent our district as well as, as, as the rest of the county as well. So when, when I'm, when you're elected to the commission board, you're elected to the board. You represent District Two and you try your best to represent that. But if you're there just to represent District Two, you spend, you'll have an awful lot of idle time.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Mr. Highsmith, two minutes, please.
Yes, Joel Highsmith, current mayor of Shoshone. Larry and I have some differences of opinion, that's why I'm running. Larry's a good guy, known him quite a while. I can honestly say we probably never had any differences until I became mayor. And, but District Two, I'm running for county commissioner, District Two. I believe that's the primary, be my primary goal. I mean, most things that's good for Riverton and Lander will be good for DuBois and Shoshone, Pavilion. But, but District Two, that's who elects me. That's, that's who I represent, is the people in District Two. So you'll see me in DuBois. Pavilion will see me. They'll see me in Missouri Valley. They'll see me at Delpheters. I will be, be around representing my, our district. If you elect me, it's our district. Those that know me, I fight very hard as Mayor Shoshone, for Shoshone, because that's my duty. Not saying that, you know, you're part of, as Larry said, a part of a team, but you really need to talk to the people that elect you. You need to come and see them. You need to hit some council meetings. And, and you just, you need to stay involved with the citizenry or you don't know what, what you're doing. So that, that's, you know, that's something. Now, I definitely don't have the experience Larry's got. That county commissioner's a, you know, a huge job with a lot of responsibilities. But I'll get in there and learn. I mean, there's poor others that, that are there and some of it can help, but that, that's what I'm trying to do.
Why don't you say standing? You can take the first question.
Yeah, go ahead, only two of us.
So, Mr. Highsmith, at the forum in Shoshone, both you and Mr. Allen discussed the ambulance service extensively. Additionally, both of you stated that you believe the ambulance service is an essential county service. Currently, Fremont County is paying for the ambulance service. Should this funding continue in this manner? If not, what are other funding options?
That's, that's a tough question. I know one of the options is, was just brought up, potential on the half cent tax or been conversation, that part of, part of that half cent economic development tax could go through there for that. That could help the county out quite a bit. You know, I don't know if we, I, ever since it's been privatized, I believe, the ambulance service hasn't been as good, definitely hasn't in Shoshone. DuBois is way out and, you know, way from everybody's. So DuBois does have an ambulance staff here. We do not in Shoshone. I don't know somewhat more volunteerism. I don't know if we can get that, but something like, but the private sensation of the ambulance service really has ruined that. I know we had a lot of, we had a lot of help, EMTs in Shoshone we don't have. They wouldn't even let, in DuBois, the companies wouldn't even let, some of them, DuBois Fire and Rescue drive the ambulance because of insurance issues. You can't, you know, there are just so many issues. There's gotta be a way to do it better with cooperation, but thank you.
Mr. Allen, 90 seconds.
So with the ambulance service, you know, it, it's like Maggie said, the, the county pays for the ambulance service entirely out of our, out of our funding. We've asked different entities, municipalities, and the tribes to help participate in, in paying for this. It currently costs us about 2.3 million a year to, to provide an ambulance service. Just a little breakdown, to provide ambulance service for DuBois alone, it's, it's about 400,000 to 600,000 a year, depending on, on the number of calls, the, the equipment, the manpower. And now that their workers formed a union, and so we had to increase our subsidy to, to match their, their wages. So I, I'm on the governor's task force for the EMS. And we have two ways currently to fund it, other than the county paying for the tax. And one is, is go to the voters, and this is in both cases, go to the voters and ask for an additional one cent tax and, or, or the, or attach it to the half cent economic sales tax that's currently up for vote. Right now, with the property evaluations and the property tax situation, we chose not to do this while we still have some funds in the general fund that we can afford to do that. But one thing we did do, we got, we applied for a grant through the Department of Health and got a million dollar grant to, to do nothing but ground transportation. And that would be from the hospital to hospital or a hospital to a specialized service. And that should start any day.
Okay, thank you. You have 30 seconds for rebuttal if you'd like, Mr. Highsmith.
Thank you. It's, you know, one other thing, it's costing a lot of money. But, you know, we maybe look on where we're spending money in the county and prioritize where we're spending our money. You know, we may not need more taxes, but if we prioritize what we're spending, we may be able to find something there, just should be looked at.
Do you have any ideas about where you'd cut something?
I, I, well, maybe solid waste, maybe we're paying about three mills and we're also paying a pretty good scale tax for one. You know, that's definitely a concern.
Okay, well, we'll get to that topic. I just invited that, sorry. Mr. Allen, given the current scope of county commission, what are the top two to three areas that the commission should prioritize?
So, you know, we, we put a lot of effort in to the, the roads and the county infrastructure as far as maintenance of those roads. You know, we have about 1,000 miles of county roads and we have, with the one cent infrastructure tax that's again on the ballot this year, we've, we've regravelled over 500 miles of, of county roads. We use that money to, to maintain those roads, put mag chloride on. In DuBois alone, there's about 50 miles of county roads within the DuBois area. And we mag chloride about 43 miles of that. And that's, that's quite expensive. You know, we, we just did, we spent 2, 2.2 million dollars, I believe, on, on Horse Creek Road. And then when they completed it, the mayor and I got together and talked about the approach into their off, off the highway up Horse Creek. We partnered with the town of DuBois and widened that approach. Like I said, we regravelled, we just recently regraveled East Fork Road, 17 miles, and we're putting in the Wiggins Fork Bridge. There again, that's another $2 million that we've done. We just authorized and approved expanding the search and rescue building here in Riverton, uh, DuBois, excuse me, at, at a half a million dollars. So.
You'll have a moment for rebuttal. Maybe you can come up with one more. Mr. Highsmith, two or three ideas.
Two, two or three things that we should.
Areas that the commission should prioritize.
Okay, well, the roads, of course. But anyway, let's look at some of the other things. Yeah, mental health, healthcare. I, I think that's something we, we definitely should look at. I don't know what's the topic, but I think that's one of the things that we, that's an issue in, in Fremont County. Economic development and housing. We have housing issues all, all across the, all across the county. I think there could be some partnerships between municipalities and the county on, 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 on some of this if we work, work together. That, that's an issue. Law enforcement is definitely, we've got to have good law enforcement, support our, support our law enforcement. One of the things that, that we're not addressing, I feel, it was a topic here in DuBois, was daycare. For economic development, you need daycare in your municipality. So the county commissioners, if I understand everything correctly, if they award funding to a project, you can't intertwine with this, like the town of DuBois, to make, between the two, to make a project go. And, and that, that should be allowed, I think.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, further thoughts?
So ambulance, of course, we, we touched on that, that subject. You know, ambulance is, is not a designated service from the state of Wyoming and, and let me say it clearly, not deemed an essential service. So I had talked to our current legislators about getting it, since I'm on the governor's task force, getting that declared a, an essential service. And five out of the six legislators told me that if we, if the legislator deems it an essential service, they'll put the funding requirements back on the county.
Thank you. Mr. Highsmith, the homestead exemption law, we talked about this last time, it goes into effect in 2025, includes a 50% exemption for homeowners who are older than 65 and have paid property taxes for 25 years. This exemption will create a significant revenue shortfall, both for the county and statewide, which impacts state school funds in the first year alone. How should the revenue laws be replaced and/or what services should be cut?
I, I believe that's a, that's a good, that's a good start. I fall in that age bracket and would qualify for, for that. I see my property taxes going up, but not near as what you see here in the upper country in DuBois. But then it can force people out. I think this is good. I think I heard numbers of like 40, not 49 million dollars. But we don't have a state, we ask our state legislators, they put over a billion dollars away. You know, I believe the state has the ability to backfill, to help the counties and municipalities on this. I, I believe the funding's there, they just got to have the will. I think people that have lived in there, in its ranches and how homes, for that, that's going up so much it forces them out of their home, that's not a good thing. And I think the state's got the money to cover that and to backfill to help the counties and municipalities. That's, I just believe they do.
Mr. Allen, what do you think about this?
So we recognize that the shortfalls are going to happen and it's going to affect our, our revenues. So let's start with recently, the tribes took over the oil fields, Circle Ridge, Steamboat and, and that like from Merit Energy. They refused to pay any, any mineral taxes at all. So we lost 2.2 million dollars on that, on that alone. With the mineral extraction businesses that are, that are in the county, with, with their revenues being down, with their shortfalls, we're, we're, there again, we're short. And, and part of that is from Senate file, Senate Bill 60. And that, that gives the oil companies or the mineral producers 13 years to pay their taxes. Well, we all know what's going to happen. Luckily for us, 60% of those taxpayers have paid their taxes upfront. We're still waiting on that. So that, that's an additional 2.2 million dollars shortfall that we recognize right now. With the current property tax bill that passed, that's in effect now, that, that shorted us about 300,000 with the, with the, the other tax that's going to come up in, in 2025. We look at anywhere from 500 to 600,000 shortfall. We're not sure yet because we're, we're, so what services should be cut? They're all important to somebody and it, and you cut some child services. Somebody needs that service.
Thank you for trying to answer that, part of that question. And we'll have another question on that, give you some more time. If you'd like a little additional time, yes?
Yeah, okay, I'll try to keep this short. Yeah, I, I, I believe we can do this without cutting services. What the county just lost, I had, it really didn't apply to this, the question. We're, we're talking about the 300,000 hours. If we, like I said, we put pressure on our legislators and work with it, state will find the money. I believe the state will backfill this and I believe there's a lot of sentiment to do that.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, as a commissioner, how would you work through public land and multiple use issues, including access to public land?
So that's, that's a great question. So with, with recently, in the news, topic was the, the Rock Springs RMP with the BLM. When they wrote that RMP, it took them 12 years to write that RMP, Resource Management Plan. They did not take into, into consideration any of our lander resource management, lander resource management plan that the county had written. And we, we formed a committee with, with ranchers, businessmen, all, all different walks of life to help write that management plan. And it, it spells out what we, what we want to see happen and what we need to protect and so on and so forth. It, it, it takes about six to eight months. We hired a consulting firm out of Jackson that helped us with it. And we had submitted that in 2021. And when they wrote the RMP, the BLM wrote the RMP, they didn't even look at, at our lander resource management plan. So we, we spent, we've spent countless hours writing a, a letter of, of appeal and access to public land is essential and we must protect that. And we, we push to be cooperators in, in those meetings and we push to have our voices be heard, just like the Muddy Ridge revocation.
Thank you, Mr. Highsmith.
Yeah, Larry spoke very well about that. You know, the county needs to be involved. And, you know, this present administration we have out of Washington DC may just ignore what we're doing in their direction, but the county needs to be involved with that and actually is, is supposed to be involved. But like I said, you just need to work, work hard. Like I said, it's, I think county commissioners was doing that with this and, and BLM just blew them off.
Did you want to add anything, Mr. Allen?
There's a lot I could add. I'd get carried away.
So if the audience would like to submit any questions to the people collecting questions at this time, that'd be great. The next question goes to Mr. Highsmith, and you're not even going to believe this, how long you have to listen to me talk. The county budget includes special districts such as water districts, cemetery districts, senior citizen districts, fire districts, school districts, recreation districts, solid waste districts, weed and pest districts, a watershed improvement district, and conservation districts. Additionally, the county budget includes the county fair, county museums, county libraries, 4H, the women's infant and children program, county sheriff, public health nurse, county roads, Title 25, the county planner, the county administrative offices such as the clerk, assessor, and treasurer, the county attorney, the clerk of the district court, and other social services. Are there two to three services that you believe the county should not be funding? Additionally, are there services that the county is not currently funding but should be funding? And we might give you two minutes instead of a minute and a half.
Yeah, it's, I almost need that long list written down in front of me. Services that shouldn't, shouldn't be funded. Well, I, I don't know without, there may be multiple things that, that should be looked, looked at, whether the money is getting spent properly. Any, any on our special districts, I know like we have our seniors center in Shoshone that people voted to support that. So if you, if you're doing the right things, you know, they, they vote to support that and that, that, that works whenever people vote to tax themselves, that's a, that's a good thing. I, there again, I'd like to see the county get involved in, in daycare for, for, for one. They're already involved with ambulance, but I think we need to investigate maybe other, other options. You know, I, library was on there, correct?
Everything's on there. Really the question is, is can anything go?
Yeah, I don't know if anything should go, but there may be things like that we need to evaluate what we're spending. I really haven't zeroed on anything I think should, should go.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Allen, your thoughts, broad topic.
So it, it is a huge topic and, and a lot of the departments are funded through the general, through the general fund, through the, the county's budget process ourselves. We have several districts that don't. We review their, their budgets like county fire, weed and pest, solid waste, and, and library as well. But library is a little different because they ask us for, for some funding. The others don't. County fire does not ask for funding. Solid waste does not and weed and pest does not. They're, they're, they are funded by mill levies. But in the overall scheme, if you look at the chart of how the, the taxes are broken up, 47%, 40, 47 mills are designated right off the top of the total income to the schools, to education. We, we are allowed at the maximum for, to levy 12 mills. So, so with that, we have to figure out how to fund law enforcement. Law enforcement is almost $5 million a year. The library is, you know, it is what it is. The, every other department is huge. And then where do you cut? You know, all those departments are important. You know, I got to say one thing real quick, like WIC, extension, public health nurse, those are all funded about 80% by the state and then the county picks up the other 20% for, for wages for personnel mainly and a few occasional services.
And you're in favor of that, correct? Do I understand? Okay. Mr. Highsmith, would you want to add?
No, we're, we're good with that. I couldn't come up with anything either.
Okay. Mr. Allen, given our current system of taxation that funds our government and public programs, what do you believe should be taxed? Or in the alternative, what state services should be modified?
That, that's a tough one because, you know, we, we essentially, all of us outside of the reservation pay property taxes. The, the fair tax to everyone is that a, a sales tax be levied because everyone pays the sales tax. You know, there was a bill that was proposed in the legislature this last year that they increased the sales tax to 7% and, and then do away with property taxes. Well, that sounds attractive, but then you go to the, the infrastructure tax that, that we all count on, the cities, the towns, the municipalities, the county. Without that, that one cent infrastructure tax, we wouldn't be able to do any of the roads. We wouldn't be able to replace any bridges. We, so I don't, you know, luckily enough for us that we don't have to pass laws that implement taxes one way or the other, although we do give approval for, for taxes such as, well, the ones, 1% infrastructure tax, the half cent economic sales tax. The, we give approval this year for the Riverton Senior Center and the Lander Senior Center to vote on a special tax similar to what Shoshone has, just in their districts. The rest of the county wouldn't pay it, it's just for their districts.
Thank you. Mr. Highsmith, what do you think should be taxed?
Gee, I'd like to say nothing. Everybody would be happy with that, but we got to, we got to have some, got to have some taxes. We're, we, we definitely have, have our sales tax and, and as, as commissioner said, that sales taxes, fair taxes, everybody pays it. I don't know the formula, how you would work that to replace property tax. That, that's way above, way above, way above my level. Definitely the one cent tax, we, we definitely need that. The half cent tax, if it's spent properly, that's, there again, but that's a tax that people vote on. And if you vote to tax yourself, then that's good. If you don't like the tax, vote against it, that's good. You know, that's, that's, that's real good. I don't know what we want to give up. I think we should pay some sales tax. We should pay some, I'm not an opponent to getting rid of all property tax now so we can figure out how to, the state's got to make some money somewhere. You know, we need to encourage more economic development to try to diversify our, our income to help, so it doesn't turn such a burden on landowners, on property tax.
Mr. Allen, did you want to rebut that?
No, I'm, I'm good, thank you.
I promise this is the very last tax question. And it goes to you, Mr. Highsmith. And your answer actually leads right into this. Currently, the half cent tax supports the airport, bus service, and economic development projects. What changes, if any, would you propose?
There's, I think that was a pretty, pretty good formula. I believe it was a learning process for some of the organizations on how, how some of the money was approved and, and spent. We're looking, we haven't put any big money out, you know, haven't had a, we got a couple people looking at projects. You know, one of the things we look at doing in Shoshone, instead of just a grant, either a 0% or 1% loan so the money stays in that community and rotates around. We don't lose it on a grant. That's if we get, we got a couple projects looking. That's what we, one of the things we're going to do. It's been brought up that it could help support ambulance. There again, if the people vote for it, I support that also because that's a fair way to, I'd rather see some of that half cent money spent on that than, than raising our property tax out of, out of mill levy. You know, I would rather see it that way, try to help the county pay for that. But I believe the smaller communities, DuBois, you know, Shoshone, Pavilion. But I believe the smaller communities, DuBois, you know, Shoshone, Pavilion, Hudson, we, we use this money for some economic development. If they take that away from us, that don't give us any money to do much. The big three, I think, can, can help especially with the, they can afford, I believe they'll lose some and still have money, which we, we would lose that here and we don't.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, would you propose any changes?
Currently, the way it is, is first of all, the, the commissioners were never in favor of the half cent economic sales tax because of the wording on, on the ballot. We, we wanted more direct definition of how, how the tax should be spent, and it went in the, and I'll just paraphrase, but the, the wording was, it would, twenty-three percent or twenty-four percent would go to air, air service to pay for the MRG, you know, the, the subsidy to keep the, the airlines in. Thirteen percent, or twelve or thirteen percent would go to ground transportation. Well, for instance, DuBois doesn't get any benefit currently for ground transportation. They've worked the schedule where if there's an event up here, WRTA will come up here and service and bring people up here and, and transport them back and forth. I felt that ground transportation would include senior citizen centers, you know, for their buses, their vehicles, to help them with their transportation. I mean, they're, they're, they're in a tight spot just like everybody else, and in the past, they haven't been able to even get a, get a proposal in to, to get that studied. So, that, if, if it could go to ambulance service, that'd be great, but currently, the way it's written, written in the ballot, I'm not in favor of it.
Thank you. Mr. Highsmith, thirty seconds.
Yes, just quickly, just minor numbers, there's twenty percent for air and ten percent for ground. DuBois Mayor Pat was able to negotiate and receive the money for ground transportation, does go directly to DuBois now, and I believe it's going to seniors center, two buses here, I believe, and which that's what, it was, the wording was designed to be able to do that, and DuBois Mayor Pat negotiated that, and that's the way that money's getting spent and should be.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Allen, should the county commission play a role in solving the problem of access to local medical care? Why or why not?
So, so the medical care, you know, I'll give you an example for, for the hospital in Riverton and Landor. They're a private entity, for-profit service. They don't contribute anything to the county. They, they do, they provide indigent, indigent care, but they do that with a trade-out that the county pays for property taxes, for the property that they own and operate with. So, so with that, they don't contribute anything to the ambulance fund, they don't contribute anything else. If, if, if they would step up and provide ambu, would sponsor, even sponsor the ambulance operation, the reimbursement rates would go up towards a hundred and ten percent. Currently, the, the, the provider that we have only gets reimbursed about sixty-seven percent. So, if you, if, if we wanna have a say in, in, say overseeing healthcare, we would have to form a healthcare district, and once you do that, it would, it would all, it would not be strictly the hospitals, it would be every clinic, every eye doctor, every, everybody that has their own private clinic, they would all get a piece of that healthcare district. And there again, that's another tax.
Mr. Highsmith?
It's, it got privatized, our, our healthcare, a long, a long time ago, and it probably just like ambulance services, probably a lot better, I think, when, when the county operated it than, than, than what we have now, but here we are. And I don't have an answer for that. I wish I, I did, I'm sure Larry's looked at it quite a bit. There's a, I, I don't know the answer. I know even the Tona County government, they sold their hospital and it's went, went private also. I don't know what we can, what the county can legally, legally do without running into all liability Larry just described. So, I don't have no answer with that one either. Wish I did.
Did you want to add anything, Mr. Allen?
No, I'm, I'm good, I, if you have any questions after we're done, please visit me. I, I could go on and on and on.
Mr. Highsmith, currently, a Fremont County citizen in a mental health crisis is housed in an emergency room or, in extreme cases, in jail. Should Fremont County establish a designated mental health facility for people experiencing mental health crisis? Why or why not?
I, I, I believe Title 25, they go to Worland, Casper, I believe Rock Springs is an option. We have, we have no facility, so I don't know through economic development and opportunities, if you gotta sometimes think outside the box, that's what I did in Shoshone, we got our medical clinic. You gotta think outside the box. That's definitely an, an issue. Transportation is an issue, transportation Title 25 people from here to, to other places. You know, this is, I, I thought Riverton at one time was looking at, at a facility and that, I don't, it didn't take, but it's, what takes a lot of money. But I, I believe if you look at it and look at a lot of the federal funding, you just gotta really look into the rock and try to figure out how to do it, but I think it's very important. We have big issues of what happened, you know, last year with, in the, in the Landor Hospital, just one thing, but it's, yeah, I think it's very important and we need to work hard and look and see if we can find a, find a solution.
So, we've, we've looked at all the options, you know, there was a mental health wing designated in, at the Landor, at Sage West currently, currently Sage West. They closed that wing down and it was for mental health, Title 25 patients, so on and so forth. To, to get it up to standards, to, for CES, Medicare, to their standards, it would be three and a half million dollars for them to upgrade that facility, to, to secure it. And every, every patient in there would have to have someone, a guard, someone to watch over them twenty-four seven outside their door. And, and of course, it would be pretty much, it would, would be confinement to that room and there would be nothing that they could, you know, hurt themselves or, or, or attack someone else if someone came in. We, we've looked at, we, we hire Fremont Counseling to do our evaluations. We call them the gatekeeper for our Title 25 patients. We, we normally budget three hundred thousand dollars a year for Title 25 cases alone, and so Title 25 is, is the legislature demanded us that we have to care for that patient for the first seventy-two hours, so.
No, you finished your sentence.
So, with that, the last, not last year, but this year and the year before that, we had to do budget transfers and transfer two hundred thousand dollars additional to cover the costs, and, and, and I could go on about the keeping it in jail.
So, about the facility, yes or no, we should have a designated facility?
If we could afford it, yes.
Thank you. Want to add anything?
Uh, yeah, I, you know, I agree, we need to have one. I think you gotta set priorities, and when you're doing your budget, you set priorities, you look, like I said, and, and look outside the box and try to find, we need a facility, I believe, similar to what Worland has here in Fremont County. I just do, I think that's an important, important thing.
Mr. Allen, assuming that the commission has hired a qualified librarian, should a community member be able to override the library's acquisition, display, and oversight policy? Why or why not?
So, so the library, assuming they, they hire a competent librarian, the head, the head librarian, a, a, a person not on the board, a person that has some, some concerns, can go to the board, scheduled to be on the agenda, and have, have a, a, a meeting with the board and air their differences, and whether that, whether that board agrees with you or not. And, and, and it's, it's similar to the county commission. If somebody's got something to say, they don't agree with our policy, they don't agree with what we, we voted on, they can come in and say, you know, why, why did you do that? How can you do this? This affects this, this, and this. But we, as far as a person off the street, like you said, come in and, and talk to the library, it's, it's, there's a process, a due pro, due, due process that people need to follow.
Mr. Highsmith?
Yeah, there, there should be, should be a due process, but it should not be that hard to follow, you know what I mean? But you need to, as, as elected official, you need to appoint board members that are like-minded, that, that, that follows what the, what the county commissioners want. They need to hire a, a director that does a lot of, I know a lot of library direction comes from, they get funded for, funded from Washington DC or back, and a lot of their direction is through the national. They, they may not have, the national values may be different than what we have here in Fremont County. I do, I do know that. I, I do know that some of the books that was in the library that would be offensive to me. So I understand the passion takes, but it, it needs to be followed in, in, in the right way, but there's, as commissioners, you know, you need to appoint, as mayor, I need, we, as our governing body, we need to appoint people that have, that are like-minded and, and do what, they should vote and do what, they're appointed by elected officials, they should do that, and elected officials are, are elected by the public, and so, don't just let them run around doing whatever they want.
Thirty seconds.
So, so currently, there is a policy in place to, to, to get books off the shelf and, and it's, they call it a challenge, a book. So the, one, one of the requirements is that that person that challenges that book to be removed has to read the book in its entirety. Then, once it's challenged, the, the, the head librarian, Anita Marple in this case, she reads the book and then she has, she talks to the board and then they make a decision whether to remove it or not. So, there is a challenge, procedure to put in place currently.
Thank you.
I think so.
Got distracted.
Yes.
Mr. Highsmith, what thoughts do you have on how to support childcare services in DuBois specifically? Seems like a perfect question for you.
Yeah, I, I believe that the county and the municipality of DuBois get together and look at how they could help fund that with a good business plan. Someone that's got a business plan and, 'cause I believe, I know childcare is, is an issue in DuBois, is probably everywhere else. It is in Shoshone, we're trying, we're working on that, trying to put that together, but I, I think that can be a cooperative project and the, it is, you know, that's part of, establishing a fund for daycare is part of the charge for the county commissioners. They're actually, that's, that's part of their description of what they should be doing. It's, it's general powers and duties, Section Three, K, Section K, establish a fund for daycares. That's part of the charge of the county commissioners. They should be working towards doing that. And there again, I addressed earlier, I believe that can be a collaborative between, 'cause the, the county didn't quite have enough and the town of DuBois didn't quite have enough, why can't the two come together and make it happen? 'Cause that's an important part of economic development. It's an important part of your community. That's, that's my belief.
Mr. Allen, thoughts?
So, so I agree, you know, the child, childcare and, uh, daycare is, is, is an essential service that, that people need to, to, to establish. I'll give you an example, the, we had a move committee, so with the half cent economic sales tax, they fill out applications and ask for, ask a committee that we, that we have in place to review the, the documents, interview, do an, do an interview process, and they decide whether to make the recommendation to the commissioners for funding, partial funding, whatever the case may be, and, and maybe in some cases, not any funding at all. So, recently, we had a, a daycare in, in DuBois that applied for some funding, approximately eighty thousand dollars. And that move committee did the interviews and decided to award them ninety thousand dollars. Well, then it, then it came, and, and so the town of DuBois was going to rent them a, a building, and the ninety thousand was to upgrade it and to make improvements to that building so they could have a childcare there. Then, then they came back and asked us for a hundred thousand, and the, the commissioners spoke with the move committee and they recommended that they would stick at the ninety thousand because we don't pay for personnel, salaries and benefits and that kind of thing. So they would stick at the ninety thousand. That, that person that applied for it declined the ninety thousand.
Mr. Highsmith?
You know, I believe if the county would have allowed the, the town of DuBois's half cent economic committee to contribute, they could have made it, they could have made it happen. But they won't allow, the county move will not allow the city to combine. That's the information I've been given, but that was, if they could have combined, and that's what I, that's what I'm advocate for, let the county and the municipality work together.
Mr. Allen, you've been on the commission, is that something that's possible, to combine things, or no?
It is, it is possible. So, so I had spoken to the mayor about the additional ten thousand dollars, and she thought that they could, the city could gift the daycare that additional funding, one way or the other. Now, I don't know, that's, you know, has to go through the city council and so on and so forth.
But it is such combinations as Mr. Highsmith has suggested, you believe it's possible in the future for things?
Yeah. Our, our, just real clear, real clear, our, our rules say that they can only get funding from one committee or one group, and that's it. So if they get funding from us, they're not allowed to get it from Lyft or, or Edge or one of those, but if the city wanted to gift them some money, they could do that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Allen, what is the rule of public comment in shaping county decisions? What will you do to ensure that the public has ample opportunity to voice their opinions about county issues?
So currently, we have a public comment period put in place, and we started that, I believe it was on my second term. We didn't have anything in place and, and most counties don't have a public comment period. You can submit a written document to them and they can, they can review it, and if they want to comment on it, they will, but we, we put in a, a public comment period for fifteen minutes. Now here, within the last two years, we had a, an individual that's, that's, came into us and, and was adamant about some of the books that we, that the library had in place, and during the public comment period, that person got very descriptive and was using obscene And during the public comment period, that person got very descriptive and was using obscene language and descri-, and read out of the book. And I, I stopped her, and I said, we don't use that kind of language here. So, we evaluated our, our public comment period. We put some, after about a month of, of dealing with attorneys and stuff, you got to be real careful about public, you know, public has the right to say freedom of speech. So, um, we had to get some legal advice and, and stuff like that. So, we held off on the, on the public comment for, period for about thirty days. And then we set some guidelines, and, and they're in place, and so far, everybody's been respecting them.
Thank you. Mr. Highsmith, what are your thoughts on that?
Well, yeah, I'm definitely in favor of public comment, and, and we Zoom our meetings in Shoshone too, and, and we leave them up. But it's, I understand what Larry's saying, it's, uh, I, we don't allow cursing in our, in our public meetings either at you. And, uh, because it can be offensive to so many people, and you don't, you just, that shouldn't be a, definitely, definitely shouldn't be allowed. But, you know, I don't know the whole story, but I believe the, the young lady that was, that was reading from the book was frustrated because the book was still in the library. And if a young child could check that book out, if you can't, it couldn't be read in an open meeting, I, you know, if it wasn't allowed, and it shouldn't have been read, you know, I don't, that, that descriptive stuff, that shouldn't be in an open, that should not be in a meeting. But also, a child should not be checking, checking that out, and that, and that, and that. The commission was dealing with that, but, so they was put in a tight spot. But it's, uh, but I think the lady that did that was just frustrated, because if you don't get in for it with the library board, you got to go to the county commissioners. If you, if, if you feel that there's any issue and that book stops at the county commissioner. So, anyway, yes, thank you.
Thirty seconds to respond to that?
So, just, just real quick, um, when, when that happened, there, the, um, of course, we, we publish our Zoom meetings on, um, on the internet, and it's, it's available for anybody to view. And our concern was that this was during our meeting, during our, during our session, and that it, that people want to be cooking dinner and, and watching it on, on YouTube or, or listening to it, and their kids are in there. And it was uncalled for, and I think that we, we made our point clear. And like I said, we've been, it's been well-respected since.
I think I just have one final question here before closing statements. Fremont County, Mr. Highsmith, has a public intoxication problem that affects city businesses and local tourism, and is witnessed by children in our communities. Local law enforcement is shouldering the bulk of attempting to manage the problem without much recourse other than jail, a weak offering of treatment, or just moving offenders along. What alternative methods might the county commission offer to assist in this ongoing issue?
Probably one of the biggest problems on the county, trying to figure that out, is how are they going to fund it? What services would you, would you draw up to do that? But that's really important. But with, with the problem like that, I, there again, it's got to take cooperations. You know, I, I, I believe the municipalities and the county and, you know, all entities, the, the tribes should be involved with, with this. And I, if we have a better, there, there's, there is places that, uh, that won't accept. If you got, if you're drunk, they won't let you, homeless, they won't let you come and stay in there. There's people, alcohol problems, got that. So, you end up in jail. But I, you know, I don't know how, where we would get. That's something, and again, that's something that needs to be looked into and figured out, how can we fund this and do something? Because we should be able to do something better. It's, uh, not too big of an issue in Shoshone, but I, I was at an engineer in Riverton, and there was a guy passed out right on the sidewalk, right in front of his office. And, and that happens multiple times. They, they said, per week, in front of their office. But that's something to be addressed, but that's something you got to dig into and figure out how to do it, how to fund it.
So, public intoxication is huge. You know, we get a coroner's report every month. And, um, intoxication is about forty-five percent of the total deaths we have. And, and, and they categorize public intoxication along with, with, uh, drug abuse. So, drug abuse is so, is so rampant, we have trouble with, with our CAST, uh, juvenile treatment court, and, and so on and so forth. They're even arresting, not arresting, but they're taking kids into custody and taking them, um, DFS is taking those kids at, at the age of six or seven years old that are under the influence of either alcohol or drugs during school. It's huge. We, we, we have partnered and, and we have funded to, to assist a, a, a study to put a, a shelter in place in Riverton. Riverton is the largest offender, if you will, of alcohol intoxication or intoxication of any kind. And, um, we get a lot of heat, uh, so we're paying for a study to see if that'll pass. And then we, we contributed additional sixty thousand dollars to Eagles Hope. Once they get, once they go through recovery, they, it gives these folks a place to stay, to get on their feet. And so, we contributed sixty thousand additional dollars to that. We, we, just real quick, we get a lot of heat from, from everybody when we approve a liquor license. I believe currently, the county has seventeen liquor licenses within the county. Riverton alone has thirty-seven.
Mr. Highsmith, any additional thoughts?
It's, uh, like I said, Larry's been fighting this battle for twelve years, so he's got a little, maybe better eye in. But I just think, we just need to look, work hard and look, and think outside the box and see if we can't something, do something that we can make it better.
You can stand back up, make a closing statement for us, if you would.
I'm running for county commissioner, District Two, for you. If I'm elected, I'll represent District Two. That's very important to me. The, whoever elects you, you represent them. Not everything is, that's good for Riverton, Lander will be good for DuBois up here. Larry's been working at it for twelve years. He's got a lot of experience. He's got some better answers than I do, so he's got the knowledge. But what you'll get from me is someone that will work hard, you'll have a fresh look at things. I'm trying to, I've done very well at turning the rock over and looking how far in the heck I can figure out how to, to get something put together, like our clinic, which the county decided to tax for three thousand a year, and Larry voted to tax our medical clinic that we have two nonprofits in, we don't charge many rent, and county taxed us. But you'll get that, by, from me to try to look, fix some of these things that I don't have the answers for, but I'll look with your help.
Thank you. Mr. Allen.
Well, again, thank you all for listening to, to our line of hot air and BS. And, um, I appreciate you all being here. And I'll, I'll be available after, after we're done for any questions, any concerns you might have. I, I, even though I don't stop in at the mayor's office all the time, when I'm up here, I am up here. Like I said, we, we've just completed the Horse Creek project, uh, Horse Creek Road project, where the Wiggins Fork Bridge is going to be replaced, that road other than the bridge is in, in good shape now. I'm working with Painted Hills Subdivision to possibly get a couple of their roads, uh, taken over by the county. And, um, I would appreciate your vote. There's a lot that goes on that you just can't put into words.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. So, on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Wyoming, the Fremont County Republican Party, the Republican Women of Fremont County PAC, and the Fremont County Democratic Party, I want to thank these candidates for participating tonight and in this election. It's humbling to hear how much they have invested in our community. Earlier, I asked you all to not applaud and do anything, but you just applauded, so that's great. We're going to have a ten-minute intermission. We hope you will stay with us for the House District Thirty-four and Senate District Twenty-six forum, which will commence directly after the intermission. Please consider completing an electronic survey, which can be accessed through the Q R code at the leak's table. We really are interested in your feedback for this forum, and we would appreciate it if you consider this to have been a nonpartisan event. Tell your friends, because not only is there going to be another forum next week in Lander, but we're going to do this again for the next election, because Michelle Escudero and Linda Barton and everybody who's part of this team, and now Tara Berg and Scott Hartsberger, we all really care about educating people, and we're not partisan, really, as a board. And we want people to come, and we're really very sorely disappointed that some people have opted not to participate. So, reach out to your friends. We'd appreciate it. There's light refreshments. Please join us, and the candidates will be here to answer additional questions.